I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go right to visitor, Andy Mayer, Executive Director, Addison County Chamber of Commerce. Everybody know Andy, don't they? Andy, you have the floor. I understand you want to talk to us.
I do. I thought I would just give you a general update on what the chamber is up to. I don't think I've done some specific things along those lines, that's not good. If you wanted two minutes, you should probably tell me now, but I won't go more than eight or so anyway, so.
If you're promising eight, you can have nine and a half. At ten, I'll stop you.
We probably both want to know what we're in for, you know? Yeah, I just wanted to start with saying what the chamber does to what we are doing. In general, what we do is things that businesses can't do by themselves, or communities can't do by themselves. Together, we can accomplish a whole lot more. Typically, what the chamber does is the nature of marketing and PR, promotion, maybe in the broad sense. Currently, a new initiative, our website, we have greatly improved. And we now have the ability to track the hits that members get on a page. Every member gets a page on the site, and we can tell exactly how many visits they're getting. Obviously, this is good for us, because we can show them the value, but the real thing is, we can tell it's working. People are really using our site to find information about the area, about businesses, about special events. There's a whole lot of information there, so just, I guess, a plug for AddisonCounty.com. In times of crisis, like when the bridge out here got closed down suddenly, that's when we really know what we need to do, because when everybody starts scrambling, good information needs to be gathered and disseminated. Obviously, we're in a time of crisis. Again, in the state, not so much Addison County. Not that there hasn't been some damage here as well. So, once again, we have been very busy, but it's kind of weird, because you've got to acknowledge that there are areas that were much harder hit. And our primary work right now is holding on to the tourism business that we would have gotten, just at the concern that the message is out there that Vermont isn't open for business. So, we've worked hard to get the message out through a giant email. We have something like 25,000 emails of addresses for visitor people that were planning or coming, or have shown some interest in coming to Addison County. So, we got that, and we used our website. We used Facebook. Used our website. There was another related concern, that the closure of the Green Mountain National Forest. As you know, one of the things that people like to do when they come here in the fall is go hiking. And, well, if the national forest is closed, at least they can't do that there. Of course, there are other places to hike, but as I understand it, I just saw that they are phasing, they are phasing the reopening. The Muslamu has been reopened, I heard this morning, and that was one concern, because that's a popular destination within the county. So, anyway, so we've been really busy with that crisis. But again, acknowledging, you know, we had no kind of the damage, as you know, like some other areas. We're also working with all the other entities, organizations in the area to kind of work on the big picture. You know, what are we really trying to get done here? What is the, what do we want the future of Addison County to be? So, we've been working with, well, in fact, there's even a meeting now, a monthly meeting of something called the Addison County Economic Development Cabinet. That is the Chamber, Economic Development Corporation, Regional Planning Commission, the Downtown Partnerships, the Virgin's Bristol and Middlebury. United Way and ACTOR. You might say, well, how do they fit in? But United Way, just basically, if employees don't have their basic needs met, they're not going to come to work, so in that way, it's kind of an economic development issue. ACTOR, same thing. And, you know, looking back to like the crisis, ACTOR was very involved when that bridge went down, as you remember, providing transportation for the people that just walked across, because they didn't want to wait in the lines to come across when there was just the one ferry operating there in Shoreham. So, anyway, just an example of how they're involved. So, that has been really good. I mean, sometimes, we're all working in our own little area, but not seeing what everybody else is doing. I'm excited. I really think this is a time of great cooperation, not, you know, it's not a contentious time. You know, partly because we don't have much of a choice. Most organizations, they're trying to do the same or more with less, so there's no real... Well, I guess we could fight and have turf issues and so on, but we're not. And obviously, that's not the way to go, and we're all trying to accomplish things. One local thing, and I'm sure Mel doesn't want me to bring this up, because I think you beat him up every time that he brings it up, even though he's not in charge of it anymore. But that's the train station of the WEG. We still think that is going to be moved, and we believe that the chamber will be operating an information center out of that. And I think that'll be a really good thing for Virgin's. I mean, there is a lot of traffic on Route 7 and the intersection there with 22A. We believe we'll get a lot of people stopping to be directed on what to do, where to stay, where to eat, where to shop in Addison County. But, you know, Virgin's is the first, is the closest community, so I mean, I think that'll be really good. Yes, you've been hearing this for a long time, and it isn't done yet. In fact, I don't even know if the bid went out, as it was supposed to, to get the thing moved.
I can assure you that it did not go out, as we were told.
Is that because of everything that's been going on?
Well, that is the excuse being used, that it had something to do with Irene. The fact of the matter is, is that it was ready to go out to bid before the 10th of August, and that was before the storm hit. So, I don't know what, I hate to say, you took it off the tracks here, but anyway, it did not go out to bid. And I sent Wayne Davis an email today, and he doesn't know exactly why, but he says that the, that General Buildings, Buildings and General Services, who's in charge of that, the way that he said that it is back in their focus and should be going out to bid soon. I mean, obviously, the whole calendar was such that it was going to be going out to bid with a contractor selected and moved before snow flies. And, you know, you can't afford to lose a month in Vermont. And another month has gone by, so I think it's probably ambitious to think that it is going to be moved this year now.
Yes, yes, things did get derailed, and that is a pun. But I know that all the resources in BGS have been focusing on trying to figure out how to place 1,700 people out of the Waterbury site. It's really been a great undertaking, and they're still trying to sort out whether those buildings can be repaired and reoccupied. There's a lot of damage, and as those that saw the news tonight, they're having some discussion with the insurance companies as well, to see what is the cost of doing that, and is it in the best interest? Sorry for that.
Yeah, no, 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 it's certainly pertinent, because, but, yeah, so, okay, it's not on the schedule that we even thought immediately. So, we can laugh about it, but we've been patient. This thing's been trying to go for 10 years, so we'll hang in there, because the end goal is a good one.
It will happen. It will happen. I mean, the money's there for it, and it will happen. It's just timing and getting it moving.
Yeah.
Physically moving.
Which is a good segue for me to talk about events, because Marguerite Senical does most of the ones that we do here. And Marguerite's, when I tell her about the train station, which she wants to be the person there, she thinks it's not going to happen in her lifetime, and I assure her it will, because she's not going anywhere, so. But we are doing all the events, and Mike's very involved with a lot of these. The basin backs didn't happen, because there was no basin to speak of early this year. There was too much water. But French Heritage Day, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Virgin's Day, fantastic this year. And then the two Halloween events, the pumpkins in the park, and then haunted forest. But since it's going to be at Kennedy Brothers', right? I don't know if we call it Haunted Forest. Somebody want to call it Haunted Building.
We're going to keep it the same title, not to be confused. It's still going to be, come see what crawled out of Otter Creek.
Yeah.
You know, anywhere in Virgin's, anything that crawled out of Otter Creek.
Yeah, actually, it's great, isn't it? I mean, it's not weather dependent now, and...
We don't have to worry about the parking lot being flooded. If it rains, the roof doesn't leak. Who knows? Maybe the heat will be on by that time, and some of our participants won't freeze. And so, yeah, a lot of good things inside, and more to be told about that later.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, so we were planning to continue all these. I do have some concern about French Heritage Day. We have, you know, all these are labors of love, and I think I already acknowledged, if I didn't, I meant to, that, you know, Marguerite works super hard on all of them. French Heritage Day in particular is her baby, if you will. It's been tough last year, maybe this year. Maybe the high watermark was the quadricentennial year. We did get some grants that let us really hire top-notch entertainment for both the day and the vei the night before. At the reenactors, who we haven't seen the last couple of years, because we don't have the money to pay for them. And while there's been good entertainment, not as much as we'd like to have. So, it's under discussion whether to continue to do both the day and the vei the night before. I really, really like French Heritage Day, so, I mean, we'll get it reinvigorated in whatever format. I mean, there is nothing more, what's the word I'm looking for? Like indigenous to this area. French Heritage Festival? And I'll give you an example. When I got here, the chamber was doing a Lego festival, which is all well and good, but, you know, are Legos made here? No, I mean, it was just, but, I mean, French Heritage Day in Virgin's, that is an appropriate thing. So, we do need to do whatever it takes. It may well be finding additional money to underwrite that. But it's, it has been a great program, and we'll, we're, as I'm saying, we're working on it. So, the exact format of what we continue is under discussion, but, so. That pretty much is my report. I would certainly take questions on anything if you have them.
Counsel, or Mel, or Joan, any questions?
I think I meant to say, and forgot, at my peril, and bringing the train station back, but I really appreciated Mel's chairing that committee. I mean, it's not, I know it's not in the city's hands anymore, but you can tell that it was a tough process. You've heard that. But that certainly wasn't from the city of Virgin's. So, I can't help but go back to the pun, but Mel did keep it on track, and I sure appreciate that.
Andy, we do appreciate the Chamber of Commerce, and we sincerely appreciate Marguerite and all that she does for our fine city. I mean, this, she is the heart and the soul of all the events. She really works hard, and she tries hard to pull a lot out of people that are getting tired, so.
I'm glad you gave her the key to the city, because, you know, she moved her residents. And all the Cornwall people are looking at her now and trying to, I'm kidding, they're not. They're, her heart is here, and you know that.
Yep, we do that. We do know that, and we really sincerely appreciate what she does.
Thank you.
Anything?
Want to thank you for coming up, and I guess we need to, at some point, get some further discussion going on about French Heritage Day and the support it need or might require, so that we can figure out how we may be able to support it.
Sure, sure. It's, yeah, thank you. You know, money's good, but commitment, it's good as well. The partnership has indicated that they would like to put more volunteer time into some of these events as well, and we really appreciate that collaboration. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. So, probably don't need me anymore. Good night.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay, we're going to move up to warrants. Have they been passed around?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that, as my notes indicated, you had a short list in your packet, and there's a number of bills. We tried to grab as many bills as we could for tonight's meeting, in light of the fact, I mean, Mike hasn't, I think he's told everyone, not on the table, but there's only one meeting in September.
Oh, I did tell him that, yeah. I didn't tell him why.
Anyway, we've been trying to grab every bill to pay tonight. The power bills and some other bills come in just a little bit later. We'll have to get those checks cut by the end of the month. But there was a number of bills that got added, and of course, aren't reflected in your, unless checks are cut, the bills aren't reflected in your budget, so I just wanted to let you know that.
The reason why we're only having one meeting this month is the 27th could have been our other meeting, and that happens to be my wife's birthday. And no offense to all you fine people, but I'd rather spend the night with my wife. So, I would ask for a motion on the city council meetings, August 23rd, 2011.
I'll make the motion.
Well, make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Randy, second. Omissions, corrections, or errors, anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And now, we will take and talk a little bit about budget.
We are, the budget is actually starting to take shape a little bit. I know, you know, our insurances have been paid here, and they aren't reflected in your budget, but some items that I, unfortunately, am already a little concerned with is police overtime, police wages and overtime. I need to sit down with George. I know he's said he was going to try to keep much better tabs on any and all reasons for overtime. I will tell you that holidays just really hit the budget hard. And it's, I think I've explained this to you before. Anytime that there's a holiday, every full-time employee is paid for the holiday. And if a full-time employee works the holiday, they get paid time and a half on top of the straight time that we paid him for the holiday. And if a special works on a holiday, they're paid double time. So, 4th of July cost us money. Labor Day cost us money. You know, so every, you know, we have 10 or 11 holidays, so it really, it really hits the budget hard. And so, it isn't, you know, necessarily where, you know, things are out of control. It's just the way that employees are paid. You know, we don't have that in Public Works or Administration. Obviously, if there's a holiday, Public Works doesn't show up to work unless it's storming out. City Hall's closed. But in the police department, police operates, you know, basically, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you know? So, there really isn't any way around some of those costs. So, you know, already, to me, it's looking like it's in a little bit of trouble. On the good news, I wanted, I handed out a sheet on the pool. Last time that we met, I was throwing numbers out, you know, very, very quickly. I had done just a little bit of input into this special spreadsheet that I do for the pool, and the numbers are really far better than what I had reported to you last month. And if you're wondering about what's up with the yellow, and what's up with the yellow, our numbers that, on the revenue side, we have collected the Mary Johnson Swim, the Mary Johnson Swim fee, which takes care of the summer rec program. But there's also an additional fee that's coming for their New Haven program. And there's another $500 or $560, so that other money hasn't shown up yet. The vending machine money hasn't shown up yet. The Fishman family donation usually shows up in December. That hasn't shown up yet. And I don't think Joan has done the $6,000 transfer yet. So, those numbers shown in yellow just haven't occurred yet, but certainly are expected to occur to, in essence, close out the 2011 season. Down on the expense side, I mean, really, all of the expenses are done. Workers' compensation, even though the employees are done, we pay workers' compensation on a quarterly basis. There are fees that we have to pay the red cross for all of our instructors, and so those have not been totally billed yet. Electricity, there's one more bill that we need to pay. Telephone, we do, even though the phone doesn't work for six months, we do pay a reduced price for that, for that period. Property insurance continues, and there shouldn't be much more in maintenance or repair. So, those numbers may change a little bit. The bottom line there, you can see that, based on these projected revenues, that pool budget, remember that the pool turned over $2,000 to us roughly in the beginning. We've operated the pool for two seasons. At the end of the first season, we ended with a little over $8,000 surplus, and that's grown to about $14,000. So, you know, it really does show, you know, that we're in good, you know, very good shape relative to the pool. And that's after having replaced the motor. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have a couple of diving boards that need to be replaced. I did share, not the spreadsheet, but did share this information to the Recreation Committee meeting that Joe may, you know, talk about tonight. But one of the things that, you know, is certainly, that there's certainly a strong possibility that you can start looking at the $6,000 that we're appropriating there for two reasons. One is, is, you know, based on the rates that we're charging and the participation, you know, I'm not going to say that this number is just going to grow to being out of control, but really, you know, it's a very substantial surplus for that pool to operate. So, I think that, on the one hand, it's, I think the city council should take a look at whether or not that $6,000 needs to carry on to that degree over year, year after year after year. The other thing, as I mentioned to the board in the past, you know, we calculated, you know, that the amount of discounts given to Virgin's residents was about $3,000. There are some costs, obviously, that are not reflecting the budget. My time, Joan's time, Melissa's time, Leslie's time, and a Public Works time. I mean, Public Works does spend some time down there. We don't bill that back. So, I think, you know, certainly, certainly at budget time, if not sooner, you know, the city council can take a look at that watershed fund and that watershed policy, because it's that policy that drives that $6,000 number. So, you know, I think that, you know, that's something that the council should look at. You know, not to look at it today, but, you know, within the next, you know, few months, I think the council should take a look at that policy.
One of the things that I would ask, that what does one feel that we should have a reserve account for large ticket items, whether it be a roof replacement or something else that may happen? I don't know if it'd be wise to put a buffer somewhere.
Does this have its own separate account?
It's a separate fund, yeah. It's not like the profits go to the general fund, no. That fund balance, you know, carries over in that fund, just like the fire department, just like the recycling fund, just like sewer. It's its own fund, so no, it doesn't like go back to the general fund, no. So, it's good news. Good problem to have, actually.
And, you know, I mean, I don't think we haven't answered your question yet, Mike, as far as where that should be, you know? At Mel, I don't.
No, you know, because we've talked about seed money for a capital kind of fund, but we don't, we don't know how much that should be.
Great, excellent, and actually, we're supposed to invite some members tonight. That kind of slipped our mind, but some other things are going on. We were going to invite some key people and extend our thanks to them, and make sure that that word gets back to them. And we really appreciate the efforts that they put in this year, yours and the rest of your committees, dealing with the pool and the staff at City Hall. It's really been above what we'd expect it would be. We expected that we'd balance out, but, you know, we've really done tremendously with everybody's efforts. The members down there, the people that came and used the pool, everything. It's great. So, thanks to all. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, great. Going to go to committee reports. Nothing about the fishing derby, all right? We're not going to have a ice fishing contest.
Joe? Yes, Mel, I mentioned what the Recreation Committee met last Friday morning. Basically, reviewed, sort of reviewed the pool and the tennis court refinishing, which has been approved, and talked about some ideas about moving forward. We listened to Kevin Rooney has been sort of talking to people and thinking about a plan for a boathouse in the basin, and we heard some of his ideas. There's been a citizen that is interested in recruiting some kids to paint murals at the skate park, and she's going to, hopefully, we're going to talk with her and kind of get an idea as far as how much she's thinking about in terms of the budget and sort of what she has in mind for that, and...
Is there some way we could get some rough sketch?
Yeah, so we're actually talking to her about, one of our members is talking with her about what she has in mind. So, we'll, you know, we'll certainly bring that up before we get, but go ahead.
Anything else, Joe?
No, that's it.
Say again.
All right, well, we, as you know, I met with the partnership at the beginning of this month, and we discussed French Heritage Day and funding of French Heritage Day and all those questions. We heard from Andy Mayer, and that was the result of Andy being here, giving us a progress update. Back to Mel and the pool and everything. When he first gave us the, what surrounding towns were doing with their pools and how far in the red they were, I was hoping that we would come even close to being breaking even. I had never dreamed that it would be profitable. Thank you, Mel.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you to all of the staff up there. That's it for me.
Okay.
Oh, Haunted Forest. You want to talk about that?
I'll talk, yeah.
The thing that we got going right now, as far as Haunted Forest, everybody heard from Andy, that Wind Grant is allowing us to use the first floor. It's going to require a little bit of work, moving some stuff around, creating the atmosphere of weaving through the building. And we're going to be able to use some of his shelving that's in there, moving it around, locating it. And got a call last night from another organization. We were looking for some different organizations to try to, try to join in. Got one last night, and they want to, I won't give out their name quite yet. We want to keep some of these things a little bit of a surprise, but October twenty-second, Kenny Brothers, we're hoping that we can start a little bit earlier because the building will be a little bit dark from just natural of having the lights out. So, enough, enough said about that. But we'll have a, going to take and schedule another meeting. I'm hoping it will be Tuesday night next week. And if I can have the fire station, Joanie, that night, seven P.M.
The people, what were their names, who were there this Saturday? They were like, thinking we had a meeting this Friday?
I don't know about Diane and.
Dave?
Yeah, I think it's, I'm not sure.
This Friday?
Yeah, because they want to go over the blueprints for the building.
Ooh, better check than the minutes. See, meeting Friday?
Yeah.
I didn't think we, we don't meet on Fridays?
No, because we couldn't meet this week because there was something going on every day this week, and with Jones Friday.
And that's the sixteen, I mean, sixteen. I will check that, okay? David, Anton, do you want?
Nothing at this point.
Okay. Peter?
The Energy Committee has obviously been in great hiatus over the summer. He took a summer vacation, and needs to be activated, which we'll be, I'll be getting that going. And the other, the committee about finances, et cetera, that's also has not been, both of those are kind of waiting to come together, yeah.
I did attend that sewer, hot water.
Yep.
Over the, yep. And, and that was very interesting. Their, their numbers were kind of, I'm not saying questionable in the sense of not being valid, valid, but the way they presented it, it didn't come out quite right. I think that the net of cost to a, a owner of an advertised house was around eight thousand dollars, maybe slightly less than that. But it's, you've got to do it by the end of the year, there's some rebates. The real picture is like around a little over ten thousand, and you get some rebate from V Perk. And so, it's, it's, it's a good deal for those that can do it and have a place they can set a solar panel on their roof, a couple of solar panels on their roof, so. But you want to make sure you don't need a roof in a few years down the road. Do your roof first and then install the solar panels. It's great. That's coming a long way. And that, by the way, is manufactured. The stuff is manufactured right over at Country Home Products, sold through them. So, it's, it's local business, it's installed by a contractor out of Bristol area. So, that's good. Anything else, Peter? Great. How was California?
Nice.
No earthquakes?
No earthquakes, no mudslides on the mountain highways and.
No fires?
No fires, and all the wineries are working.
Did you buy some samples?
Yes.
Okay, good. We may have to talk about that, Peter. Okay. There is no public here tonight for us, but we'll go to whole business and request to reduce out-of-town sewer rates.
I have, I have not put, had time to put together a recommendation for you, but I did want to share with you the results of the, of the leak survey, so that's in your packet. And I'll have a memo and recommendation for you at your meeting in October, just in time for Joan to do billing on the fifteenth of October.
Okay. Number seven, City Managers Report.
Yeah, I'm going to report on, I've got four things. Let me just report, first off, that we had our auditors here on, on August thirty-first and September one, and they've completed all their field work. The audit hasn't, hasn't been totally, you know, put together. You'll get a, you'll get a bound copy of this audit once it's done. You know, I'm going to say that the results of their audit is okay in that, obviously, the pool's in great shape, fire department's in great shape, recycling is in great shape. The general fund, on the other hand, did end up falling short of the mark. And I'll explain the, the third reason that I didn't dream would happen, to be honest with you. But when you adopted the budget for the current year, we were going to use a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of our, of our surplus. And about at the end of June thirtieth, knowing that these numbers were going to change, I gave a spreadsheet to you that showed we're going to have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but I also made it clear to you that that number is going to change for, for two reasons. And the two reasons were, one is the number of bills come in in July that are charged back to the prior year. There's about fifteen thousand dollars worth of general fund bills. The other item was because of delinquent taxes. Sixty days into the fiscal year, we are at sixteen, and we ended at, I know it changed it by thirty-six thousand nine hundred. So, whatever, whatever sixteen plus thirty-six thousand nine hundred, fifty-two thousand nine hundred is what our delinquent level was sixty days in. So, that's how, how far we dropped back. And so, that thirty, thirty-six thousand nine hundred comes right off the bottom line. The other thing that, you know, Joan and I have always struggled with, with how the auditors handle the city's investments, and, and it really ended up being problematic for us this year. Joan invests her money, you know, in very secure instruments, you know, treasuries, agencies. You know, it's not like she's playing the stock market with this. They, you know, these are CDs, agencies, or U.S. Treasuries, all right? And she buys them at face value, and they have, they have interest earnings. And the interest earnings come in, you know, accrue on a monthly basis or go into our cash account during the six month. And so, that's what we do, is we, we book the earnings. The problem is, is that our accountants, the way that they book what, what Joan has invested is based on fair market value. And we've argued with them that we don't really care about the fair market value because we're not selling anything. You know, if we have a hundred thousand dollar CD at two percent, you know, yeah, we know that we could sell that CD on the market, all right? But we're not selling anything. We, we have it, and we're going to take the interest, and we're going to hold it to maturity unless it's a callable instrument. And if it's a callable instrument, we've had experiences where, where some things that Joan's invested are called. And although Joan doesn't like it when they call them, we actually make money when they call them. You know, you never lose money on a call. It's like you got this attractive instrument, and if it's callable and somebody's paying attention out there, they'll call it. And so, we end up getting paid more than fair market value. But on June thirtieth, what happened is the general fund, fair market value of all the instruments that Joan had, in the eyes of our auditors, were less, dropped in value by fourteen thousand dollars from last year to this year, you know? Joan and I will say, we don't care because we're not, we're not selling them anyway, and we didn't sell them. You know, they come into our audit on August thirty-first, we, we still hold the paper. They have a different value on August thirty-first. But anyway, the way that they book them, they feel that they have to book fair market value. So, the point is, is that when we booked all of that interest in the general fund, let's say that we booked fourteen thousand dollars, but then when they do a fair market valus, value analysis, they, they felt that the, that the face value of those dropped by eight thousand dollars. So, we ended up with a twenty-two thousand dollar delta is the journal entry that they, that our auditors made us do. And that basically came right out of our bottom line. And what it did is it drove our fund balance to like around a hundred and eighteen thousand and some change, okay? It's less than the one twenty-five. But, you know, to me, you know, it's not, it isn't any alarming thing as far as I'm concerned, number one. You know, I, I don't think that this delinquency is, is something that we're going to, you know, have every year. You know, I, I, I don't know that we're going to have fourteen or sixteen thousand every year, but I think that our delinquencies, because of a couple of key properties, you know, ended up inflating our, our delinquents higher than what we normally would expect. And likewise, you know, the way that these, the auditors handle this, handle the fair market value of our funds, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that, but conceivably, let's say next year, when they value the fair market value of the CDs, they could say that they're worth, you know, thirty thousand dollars more. And just as Joan and I don't care when they're low, we really don't care when they're high because we're not, we're not selling them anyway. So, so anyway, we're off just a little bit, but some of it's just paper, you know. You know, these financial holdings that we don't sell are causing a little bit. So, I, to me, it's not any real big alarm.
So, sometimes you actually could be a hit.
You, we could, yeah.
And it'd be the same thing.
Right, right. The other three things I want to talk about are energy-related. First one I want to talk about is streetlights. On the wall over here is a map.
I was going to take credit for that under the committee, but I didn't quite hear.
The, the map that you see posted over here is, is the work of Bruce Bushy and I. Mike, Mike and I've talked to the City Council before about the changeover of our streetlights from, you know, mercury vapor to LED lighting. And Green Mountain Power did get their tariff or whatever to be able to change out streetlights to, to LEDs. And the, the first step involved in a complete swap-out of mercury vapors or LED is to do a complete inventory of the streetlights. So, Bruce Bushy and I, you know, we, we spent, you know, three hours on, on Friday, and we did about seventy-five or eighty percent of the town. And then on Monday, we got in a car and also did some walking, and we did the rest of the town. And so, we have all of what we believe to be the city's streetlights indicated on that map. The next step is that they do, they, they have an Excel spreadsheet that, that they sent to me that we will end up reconciling that map against our bill. And it can cut both ways. You know, it's very possible that there's streetlights out there in Virgin's that are not on our bill, which obviously would be uncovered, and therefore, when they get changed over, it will be accurate on our bill. There are also streetlights out there that, that are, that are on our bill and shouldn't be on, on our bill. Either they don't exist, or they're actually on private property. And we would get those streetlights changed so that they go to the right property owner, if there's, if that's the case. The other thing, while Bruce and I have been doing it, I think that there probably was a time, you know, when somebody would call City Hall, can I have a streetlight? And it costs three dollars and twelve cents a month for a streetlight, and somebody called Green Mountain Power and up went the light. And we actually have a, a formula is what we historically has used as to where, where to, you know, what, what is the streetlight design in Virgin's, all right? And I can tell you that basically, the streetlight design is in the, in the central business district. There's two hundred and fifty watt mercury vapors every pole. And then when you get outside of the central business district, there are a hundred watt mercury vapors every other pole and at intersections, all right? So, sometimes you do see a streetlight without a gap in between, all right? And so, one of the things that Bruce and I have done, when we went out there, was really examine. And if we saw a streetlight at an intersection, pole, streetlight, streetlight, we would look, look around kind of the neighborhood and see whether or not, you know, whether or not we might be able to eliminate a light. And, you know, I've actually even sent email to people saying, listen, there's a light out there, we don't think that we need it. I don't want to just take it down, what you're, what you're feeling about the light. And, you know, we, we want to hear that input, not that, not that the public is totally controlling that decision, but, you know, we wouldn't just take a streetlight out without, without communicating with the budding property owners. The, the streetlights, the LED, Mike knows more about these than I do, but they really broadcast light better, you know, compared to a mercury vapor. So, you actually can, you can get more with less. And Bruce and I have indicated, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's hit double figures, but there's, there's eight or ten lights out there that really aren't, aren't serving any purpose. So, so anyway, we'll, we'll look at those, and if they're, and if they have to be put back up, then, you know, we, we just put them up. So, we should be able to complete the, the work on our end so that Green Mountain Power can order the equipment, get it scheduled. You know, to me, the sooner the better. The, the potential savings to us, I think it's about eleven thousand dollars a year. I, I, I don't know that until I, you know, until I actually, you know, get a bill. But, you know, you know, it is much more efficient lighting, it's dark sky compliant light, Mike, right? You know, it's a, I've mentioned to the board before that if you want to see one of these, there are a few kicking around town. There's one out in front of Riverside Apartments, there's one out in front of Rob Keith and Ed Langloy's. There's one right across from City Hall, and there's one at the West Street entrance into, into Goodrich, if you want to, you know, see, see the difference. There is a little, there is a little difference. So, that's a story on, on streetlights. The next item, energy-related, is about, about a wind turbine. Green Mountain Power and Northland's Job Corps and a company, using a company called Encore, have put in an application to the Public Service Board to erect a wind turbine on Job Corps property.
State property.
There's a, it's on state property, all right, on, on a, on the portion that's leased to the United States Department of Labor. The proposed tower, it's, this is a large tower, it's a hundred and ten feet high. The, the fins on the, on the, on the turbine are some, each fin is about thirty feet, maybe a little more than thirty feet. This is a structure. And the location that they're proposing, if you were to, you know, park in between the chapel and the administration building and walk in a north to northeasterly direction up towards the knoll, there's a little kind of wooded area up there, and that's, that's where the location is. So, you know, Mike got official notification, we just got this today, so I didn't, I didn't. Ziggy got one, I got one at home too because I'm considered a butter, so.
I will pass this around. This is actually one that is, that is actually fit into the picture so you can get a kind of look.
How much of the noise is it going to be?
I don't know that. That's, that is exactly what my wife asked when she opened up the mail today as well, was whether or not these, you know, produce, you know, any measurable noise, you know, within a certain number of feet. I, I really don't know that big.
No, it's a hundred and ten feet in the air, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm sure that's calculated.
I have friends over, over by Eldenberg, and I, sometimes when we've, we've been over there, we sit there, and we actually, they, there are, of course, there's about a hundred and eighty of them through there, and they all have different timings when they go on, but the ones that are near their house, you can hear it. You can hear it pretty good.
I'm surprised you don't hear Goodrich.
We, I, we hear, I hear Goodrich.
I hear Goodrich.
They're handling.
This is a different noise.
The other energy-related thing I wanted to talk to you about, sorry about the theme here, but I had a visit from Steve Wark today. And if you remember, Steve and Don Gilbert, and for the life of me, I can't remember the other gentleman that was here from Vermont Gas, but they made a presentation to the board a few months ago at the time that they were, had their application into the Public Service Board to at least temporarily create this fund to, to be able to expand their territory down into Addison County and, in their eyes, hopefully, to Rutland. And Steve just stopped in just to let, let me know. I told him I had a City Council meeting tonight, and I would lay the message, his messages. And one is, is that the, the Public Service Board did grant them a so-called temporary order, whatever the phrase is, so that they are allowed to take a portion of their revenue stream, you know, excess revenue stream, and put it into this capital fund to, you know, that would first obviously go into the design phase and, you know, eventually into construction phase. They do not have a permanent order, and Steve says that it is very important for them that they have, you know, a real order, you know, not just simply a temporary, you know, for them to do this kind of a project, particularly as it relates to having it extend all the way to Rutland. So, you know, if folks were wondering, you know, whatever happened to Vermont Gas, well, there's, they still are, you know, very much interested in expanding their, their service, you know, down Route Seven or down the railroad, down into this area. They plan to create a, a committee comprised of representatives from all of the towns along the route to discuss the routing of this, of this line. So, if there's, you know, anybody here, whether or not it's somebody from the Planning Commission or somebody from the City Council that wants to be, you know, involved in, in this process, you know, uh, you know, either let me know or, or let Steve know. And, uh, uh, because it is, it is, they are going to continue to, uh, to pursue this effort. So those are my energy items, Mike.
Good deal. You've been so helpful to Peter while he was on vacation.
Yeah, yeah.
I see you can put that on your resume.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Mel. Uh, let's go right on to E. Uh, A, the business, uh, actually kind of new old business in a sense. Uh, request from Tom Denneker, Denneker Real Estate Investment, uh, LLC. Sewer extension to dealership in Ferrisburg.
Yeah, Mike, one of the things, uh, you know, Tom, uh, you know, just to, you know, this, this obviously has a history going back for a long, long time. But just to talk about the more recent history, you know, I, uh, I believe that Tom approached the, uh, approached the city sometime in two thousand and nine. Uh, the city council, uh, decided to appoint, to again, appoint a sewer extension committee. And this time it consisted of David, I believe, and, uh, Ziggy and Christine Collette and, uh, and myself. And basically what that committee, because the, the sewer extension committee that was formed back in nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four, had done a lot of work relative to a proposed article that would go before the Ferrisburg voters and before the Virgens voters. That committee's work was basically to dust off that, that nineteen ninety-four vote, uh, see if there, there, you know, could be any changes in that article or should be any change in that article since, uh, you know, since that, that, you know, nearly fifteen years had passed, that committee met, uh, and produced its results. I didn't include this in your packet, but I handed, uh, handed this out to you. The, the article that, that the committee developed back in late two thousand and nine, which was supported by the members of the city council sitting at the time, uh, authorized a letter to go to, uh, to Ferrisburg, which I also copied, uh, tonight for you. That was done at the, uh, at the end of November of two thousand and nine. Uh, there was a meeting, uh, that Mike attended, I attended, and Ziggy attended out to Ferrisburg to go over the proposed article and letter. And in part because of the timing, obviously the, this article requires a vote of the town. We, we really suggested that Ferrisburg not send this to their voters on town meeting day in two thousand and ten, feeling that it was going to give them too short of a period of time to, uh, to understand it and speak to their citizens, you know, well in advance of warning for, for any kind of a vote. Uh, and we never heard back from them, uh, you know, for quite some time until, uh, until Tom approached, uh, uh, one member of the board. And, uh, and it was clear that the, that Ferrisburg hadn't, you know, clearly notified Tom or clearly notified the city about what their feelings were. And their feelings are outlined in their letter of January of two thousand and eleven. And, uh, so Ferrisburg is, is, the Ferrisburg Board of Selectment is in essence saying that they're not interested in putting a vote in front of, in front, in, having a vote for an intermunicipal agreement in Ferrisburg, but at the same time, uh, telling Tom Denneker and copying the city to let the city know that it's, that it's their feeling that it's okay that out-of-towners, you know, go ahead and communicate with Virgens. So to me, I, you know, I, what would really be helpful for me, and I think for, for others, is clarity. And the letter that was, that was authorized by the city council in November of two thousand and nine, I, I wrote in the letter, "I think it is fair to say that except for the train station, the city of Virgens will not allow the extension of additional sewer lines into the town of Ferrisburg without voter approval in both municipalities." So I, I guess what, uh, I think should be clear is, is if this is a policy, then, then that's where this stands. And, and Tom, you know, for, for the Ferrisburg Select Board to say, "Tom, go ahead and talk to Virgens", you know, that actually is not consistent with what the city council at least said in November of two thousand and nine. And I, I just think that it should be crystal clear. If this is the position, if this is the position of the, of the city council, then I, I, I think it was already stated once, and if it needs to be stated again, then, then so, so state it. And, and that's what we tell Tom, that, uh, that we, that this city council would only deal with, uh, with an intermunicipal agreement with, with the town.
I feel we could, if we did that dealing with individuals, we're going to open up a can of worms because a next outfit may come along. There was a talk of the Dollar Store, a Dollar Store going over there. If we say no to them, but yes to Tom, we're going to be, right off the bat, there's going to be trouble. I feel that it's like, you know, it's like when I, I had kids over visiting and I, they want to stay overnight. You know, you deal with the parents, parent, parent. You don't deal with the child. And I feel this is the way it is. We're a town, or a city. We don't deal with an individual in another town. We should be dealing with the town themselves and then let them do what they have to do. I mean, that's just the way I feel.
I, I would agree with that. I mean, specifically based on the history relative to the, uh, relative to the issue. And, and particularly in light of the fact that over the years, there's been various aspersions cast relative to Virgens attempting to control development in, uh, in Ferrisburg. And it would seem relatively counterproductive, um, for us to be dealing on an individual basis. And certainly in Tom's situation, I mean, you know, Denneker Chevrolet, it's located in Ferrisburg, but it's obviously a very important part of the local economy. And, um, you know, we want to do everything that we can do to help support his endeavors along with anybody else's who's, who's a benefit. But from a procedural perspective, I think that it's very, very clear that we do need to deal with the municipality. I mean, um, whenever anybody has asked me about it over the years, my position has been that the ball is in Ferrisburg's court. And that's pretty clear. Doesn't necessarily mean that we can't move forward at some point. But I think that it very clearly has to come from Ferrisburg approaching us with some level of interest in pursuing the matter.
Any other council member want to offer any other perspective or comments to the subject?
I do. I, yeah, I, this is a, a sad position for us to be in. We should, there's, has to be some way that we can get this deal done so that Tom can have his sewer or any other person that requires sewer to be done. Uh, we changed our, our charter to accommodate that everything had to go before a vote. I agree with that. But is that, I do not believe, or it is my belief, that the, the collection of the fees has to go through another municipality. We have other properties that are already billing out of district. And I, I guess I'm, I'm going to quantify, I really feel bad for Tom Denneker because he's stuck between a rock and a hard place.
We feel, we all feel bad for him, but he's not in Virgens. He's in Ferrisburg. And that's why I don't understand why Ferrisburg, if, if they're looking ahead, you know, they have, there, there's going to be businesses eventually growing all the way down. And there's, you know, there's a lot of return for them, but we have to be careful ourselves. We have to cover ourselves before anything else.
I, I don't think, I, I certainly from my perspective, I mean, it's not my position that, you know, that, that we're not going to go ahead and attempt to work something out relative to Tom's request.
Well, according to this document or the way this is written, that we are not allowed to.
Well, we, we really can't based on the language, um, that exists, that, that was, was passed by the voters. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it can't be accomplished. It just has to be accomplished in, in the framework of an intermunicipal agreement.
With, with yours.
And, and that has to go through Ferrisburg. And I'm not really sure why it is that we're at this point, why, why the Select Board directed Tom to contact us individually, because I thought that based on those discussions, we made our position relatively clear over the years. And it, and it doesn't mean that we're attempting to stifle development. It doesn't mean that Tom Denneker can't connect to the Virgens municipal sewer system. It just means that to protect everyone involved, um, we set it up in a very specific way. And procedurally, it needs to occur how it has to occur.
Would there be anything that would prevent us from making our own wastewater rules that would be exactly the same as an agreement with Ferrisburg? That would protect us the same way an agreement with Ferrisburg would protect us? Or is that a, anyway?
I, I think that there's, what our city attorney has said about, about that, Peter, is, is that there is, there is clearly less surety when dealing with an individual versus dealing with an intermunicipal agreement.
In terms of like getting the money, in terms of doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Adherence, adherence to restrictions.
Yeah, okay.
You know, those types of things. Nothing against Tom. I'm not, I'm not.
You're talking about any business.
Right. Just saying, any, you know, once, once sewer, you know, goes to a, you know, goes to a piece of property, you know, it's, it's there. And, uh, it, it, you know, it's like I say, our, our attorneys have said that, that you really are, are better off in making sure that you are going to get compensated, you know, through an intermunicipal, certainly get compensated. You know, private individuals, they go bankrupt, uh, and then you have a different use. The property's out there. Uh, you know, it's, it's just that a, an intermunicipal agreement is just a much more solid way to, to deal with it.
And, and my other question is, what sort of capacity does making any sort of agreement like this take away from the city? I mean, obviously we have excess capacity if we're even talking about this.
Yeah, excess capacity is, you know, it's al, it's always, you know, I can give you the math, alright? And, you know, but it's always about in the eyes of, the capacity is in the eyes of the beholder, alright? We have a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon per day wastewater treatment plant. Uh, I will tell you that, um, you know, that we, we had a six hundred and sixty thousand gallon per day treatment plant, and during the last upgrade, it went to seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. And it, and it's not as though, you cannot assume that if it went from six sixty to seven fifty, then it can go to five million. Otter, Otter Creek is a biological engine, alright? And we, 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 uh, discharge into Otter Creek. And the Otter Creek can handle, you know, a certain degree of pollutants, if you will, alright? And so, uh, it, it works at that, you know, it works at that level. It's fine. So we, there's no such thing as unlimited capacity by just building on. Now, this thinking, okay, let's say that, let's say that we never want to increase the capacity of the treatment plant in Virgens, alright? Well, I can tell you that for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and ten, the average daily discharge from that plant was three hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons, alright? So it's less than fifty percent.
Okay.
Now, the problem is that's an average, average over three hundred and sixty-five days. I can tell you that in, in March of this year, we don't know what went through that plant because, you know, you know, two million gallons were coming in and we're treating seven hundred and fifty, and the rest of it went over the, went over the overflow. So even though the average is three sixty-six, did we treat every gallon that, that made it to the plant? The answer is no, alright? So that's why I say, you know, it's in the eyes of the beholder, you know? Do we, you know, do we have capacity or not? I will tell you that, uh, you know, the committee that met, you know, felt that third, I think the number was thirty thousand gallons, felt that, you know, uh, allocating thirty thousand gallons, you know, out of the seven fifty towards that, you know, given, you know, some of the benefits associated with that development, that was reasonable, you know? So it's not like, you know, it's not like what was contemplated was eighty percent of the reserve capacity. It was, it was, it was thirty thousand. So it was a, it was a limited consideration of gallons.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So back to the question, where do we go from here? Do we go back and send, uh, Ferrisburg another letter stating our, that we're maintaining our, uh, position with, we, we want a, a...
I have a question. What are we asking Ferrisburg to do? Because I, you know, they've, in this letter dated January twenty-fourth, they say that they, you know, as, as has been said, they recommended that Tom.
Deal with us.
Pardon me?
Deal with us.
Deal with us. Isn't it the same as Ferrisburg?
Saying no.
Pardon me?
Or saying no.
Well, it's basically it's giving permission for us to, you know, the, the, the city has given us permission, or the, rather, the, uh, town of Ferrisburg. And I, so I'm not, I'm not really clear what we're trying to ask Ferrisburg to do beyond, beyond this.
I think, Joe, what it is, is, you know, and obviously, city council policy can change. You know, I mean, and, you know, there was a, there was, you know, there was a time where there were, you know, the, you know, the Mobile Home Park in Walthem, you know, the, the Abisham Shopping Center, the three or four houses on Moncton Road. There was a time when the city council, you know, if you wanted to tie in, if you bought the pipe, you're, you're connected. There, there was really, that was the policy. If you paid for the pipe, you could connect. There was, there's no, there was no agreement or anything. You know, current, you know, city policy is not that. It's, uh, it's not done that way. Uh, so relative to what the city council, if the policy is that, that's that the city council will not entertain any outside connections unless through an intermunicipal agreement, that's the policy. And what, if, if that is clarified again, then what we would do is we would tell Tom, Tom, Tom wrote a letter to Mike and I, we would tell Tom, "The policy of the city council is, is that the extension of sewer will only occur under an intermunicipal agreement with, with Ferrisburg. And therefore, for sewer to be extended to your property, you mu, you must, you must approach your board." And that way, we're not saying no.
Right.
We're, we're basically clearly stating what David is saying. This is the process. And it's not, and the process isn't subject to negotiation. I think that, I think when, when we sent this letter to Ferrisburg, Ferrisburg said, "We're not interested." But then Ferrisburg writes a letter to Tom Denneker and says, "Tom, we have no objections to you talking with Virgens." Well, that's, that's not the point because that was not given as an alternative, you know?
So Ferrisburg wrote us a letter and said, "It's okay with us if Tom deals with you directly." That's still not exactly what you're...
Doesn't do it. That doesn't, doesn't, because we've already, because our policy doesn't allow that.
They need to take some responsibility. If, you know, isn't that what this, the definition of what we're doing here? So they'll be responsible.
And if they don't want an intermunicipal agreement, you know, I can, I've said this before. I've said that one other person. If the town, if the Select Board of Ferrisburg don't want an intermunicipal agreement with Virgens, it's okay with me. It's not, it's not a, it's, it's fine.
I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm a little confused too, to a degree, because again, you know, going back to, um, and this goes back, you know, a number of years, you know, with discussions relative to development issues along the Route Seven corridor. And, um, you know, basically, I think that it needs to be pointed out that if there is no intermunicipal agreement and that these things are negotiated outside of that realm, and we are, and, and we're put in the position negotiating with individual property owners, what the real effect of that is. And what the real effect of it is, is that Ferrisburg has, in a sense, abdicated responsibility for development in the Route Seven corridor in Ferrisburg. And, you know, do they really want, you know, the city council and Virgens making those decisions? I, I don't know. I mean, we can make them form if they'd like us to.
And I think, I think David, you know, that's not, you know, if, if I was a Select Board member in Ferrisburg, you know, and all due respect to all you folks, I would, I wouldn't want the legislative body of the abutting town making decisions relative to land development in town. I, I just wouldn't. You know, if the shoe was on the other foot, you wouldn't, you know, I would think that you wouldn't want that to occur.
I know, I wouldn't.
And I think it goes beyond the board in Ferrisburg itself as to some of the citizens and the citizens having concerns about paying money to the city of Virgens.
I, I mean, there's, there's that. And, and, you know, to just refresh everybody's memory, I mean, there's a couple of things that have occurred in recent memory. One was the concept of a developer from Winuski attempting to create a quote "town center" in, in Ferrisburg and, and wanting an allocation, I forget what the number of gallons was. And, and that was a very, very divisive issue in Ferrisburg relative... And, and that was a very, very divisive issue in Ferrisburg relative to that project. You know, I myself got a number of phone calls and, and, you know, people, you know, what the hell is the matter with you people in Virgens for even considering this? And on the same token, what the hell is wrong with you people in Virgens for not allowing it to occur? And, and again, I mean, we're all neighbors, but these are discussions that really have to occur in Ferrisburg with the voters in Ferrisburg. And, um, and they, and the most recent one that comes to mind is the, uh, you know, the, the proposed gas station McDonald's entity. So, I think that there's, and, and I know some of the folks on the planning commission in Ferrisburg. And, and, you know, they're, they're struggling with these, uh, these discussions and these decisions. But I, I think that, you know, on the part of Ferrisburg, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of discussion and a lot of decisions that need to be made relative to development in that corridor. Because it's, it's a lot more complicated. I mean, yeah, the money, I mean, the money's a piece of it. But really, I think when you get to the core of it, you're talking about the emotional investment that people have in this sort of thing. That's really what, what we're talking about here. And, and again, you know, to reiterate, nobody's saying that we can't do this deal and put it together. It, it just has to occur within a very specific framework. And it, it's, to me, it's not really that difficult. It's a pretty clear process that we've laid out for them.
Do you need, do you need a motion for us to reiterate our last policy?
That, that would, that would be one means of sending the message. Or we could just ask Mel to rewrite another, I mean, whatever you want to do. Your, your option. If you want to present a, a, a motion, go ahead and we'll ask for a second.
Well, that, that policy stays in place unless it's overturned.
Correct.
Essentially.
Right. And I, and I don't know exactly what was, you know, what was, uh, you know, I know what the committee did. I know that the city council authorized, I drafted this letter, sent it to the, had the city council review it. And the city council authored, authored, authorized its release, alright? And, you know, I think that, you know, if, if this letter, um, you know, the one thing that I noticed in this letter, it, in that, in that sense, it does not say intermunicipal agreement. But it certainly was implied, David, that that's what that, that was about. So, um, uh, because I think without the intermunicipal, if it wasn't for, if it, if it didn't also require intermunicipal agreement, that'd be like, that'd be like saying that Dennecker could work with Virgens. But then you go to, you go to the voters and the voters vote to say that they have, they, in Ferrisburg, that they have no objections to this agreement between Ferrisburg and Virgens. And I don't think that was what exactly the policy was. I think that the, that the policy was that, was that, uh, the extension of sewer, uh, would require an intermunicipal agreement, which, which requires voter approval. So, I, I think that would be good for that to be cleared once and for all.
Well, for discussion purposes, I would make a motion to the effect that, you have to help me with the words.
That the, that the, that the council's policy is that sewer extensions outside of Virgens can only occur with an intermunicipal, intermunicipal agreement approved by the voters of both towns.
Okay. I would make that- Would that go, have a second? Okay. Would, would that go for any town?
Yeah.
So, I could go for Pen?
Sure.
Walthem, yeah.
Walthem?
Outside the city.
Yep. So, I'm just, so, can we cover our bases? We're not being selective. Ziggy?
Exactly. We're not being selective. This is-
No, it's just for all towns.
This is all for all towns. And so, um, if, if we draft a letter, we should take and not only send it to Ferrisburg, we should send it to all towns.
Should that be fine?
I, I would feel. Well, I mean, well, that, that way, we're not being selective. And everybody's, has that. And if they choose to take it to their citizens, uh, that would be-
And I think what that does is it makes it so that property owners in adjacent towns go to their respective select boards.
Yeah.
That's where the, and that's where they should be going anyway.
Okay. We have a motion, a second? Any other further discussion?
I want to just read it to make sure-
Sure. Not a problem. Make sure we get it.
To reaffirm that the city council's policy will be not to any, entertain any outside of the city sewer extension except through an intermunicipal agreement approved by the voters of each town.
Of each respective town.
Can you make that positive? That it would be the policy of the city?
To continue?
To, well-
Extend sewer.
To extend sewer only.
Okay.
Okay. Interesting.
Having heard the motion, is there any other discussion? If there is none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Very good. Okay. Peter?
Yeah. Um, may I, before I leave, and I, I know this is a dangerous thing because I don't have the, um, advantage of any discussion on the next issue. But based on the material I had and the way I feel about the way Vermont funds, the way our money should be invested, I just would go on record as saying that I am in favor of our investments being with Vermont companies. So, that, if that becomes an issue, I just want to be clear that's where I'm coming from in this. And I, again, I, I realize it's dangerous because I haven't heard the discussion. There may be other reasons, but-
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for voicing that. Okay, we're next. Uh, item number eight, B. Mel, you want to start the ball rolling on?
Well, I, uh, I, I really don't have anything to say beyond probably the longest memo that I sent you in a, in a notes to agenda here relative to, uh, this policy. Uh, you know, you know, Joan may be able to chime in there, but I, I actually had her read. I don't typically have her read my notes to the agenda, but I did have her read this one just to make sure that I had the, I had it accurate. So, you know, as, you know, Joan and I both, I can say that it surprised both of us when we happened. This isn't really what we're looking for. What happened is, is that the, the Donnelly Fund that Joan recently invested in, you know, trying to get higher earnings, we, she invested the money with Edward Jones in municipal bonds out of, out of a, well, one of them are actually the City of Chicago, a two hundred and thirteen million dollar bond issuance in Chicago. And the other one was a, I don't know, ten or fifteen million dollar bond issue in Illinois's School District, Sagamong Number One Eighty-Six. And anyway, the, we have looked in, you know, we've looked into the, the quality of these bonds. They're very good, they're very high quality. As a matter of fact, if, you know, I told Joan, I think we should just sell. She bought these bonds at, at, at par, which is a hundred. And, uh, they currently are selling on the market for a hundred and twenty. So, if you want to make a quick twenty, we could make a quick twenty percent of her money in a, in a, in the year that she's had them. But that's not what it's about. We're not here, because one of the things, if you cashed them in, you can't buy anything that's equivalent. So, this, uh, the, uh, the interest rate on these bonds, I think it's really, in Vermont, you can have not, you can have, uh, non-in, non-taxable bonds in Vermont. And of course, that's why the interest rates are low. But in Illinois's, I think must be all of their bonds are required to be taxable. And we're allowed to invest in them. And of course, we don't pay income taxes. And so, we're getting the real, you know, seven point one five percent. So, anyway, when Joan was looking into these, or we were looking at them a little bit closer, I said to Joan, let, I mean, I want to, I want to read this investment policy. I want to understand, see if, whether or not there is grades of these bonds or whatever. And when I got to looking at the policy, you know, there wasn't any grades associated with municipal bonds. But more to the point was, I looked at this paragraph and it said that, that, uh, you know, we're supposed to have our money in institutions that are, that are, have offices in Vermont and are registered to do business in Vermont. And Joan, she didn't, you know, I think when Joan, if, if Joan read this policy, I can tell you, she leaped right down to the instruments, you know? And so, what Joan didn't look at, that paragraph that Rennie had put together, obviously, because if, if she had, uh, you know, Joan would have said, wait a second, Rennie, or something. I mean, Joan just simply looked down into the types of instruments that she typically invests in, and they all were good, right, Joan? I mean, those types of things, that's what you do. I mean, they're very, very, you know, low risk, you know, fairly liquid, you know, reasonable, reasonable earnings, okay? That's what we had. But anyway, our, uh, we have between the Davison Fund, the Watershed Fund, and the General Fund, we have, uh, three seventy-four plus two seventeen plus six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, whatever that adds up to, one point three million. We have it in three different accounts with Multibank Securities, which is a company out of Michigan, right, Joan? So, we're out of, you know, we have found ourselves out of step with this policy that was adopted in two thousand and six. And Joan can speak for itself, speak for herself. It's not a table pounder for me, Joan. I don't know if it's a table pounder for you. To me, whatever the city council decides, you know, Joan will do. I mean, it's, it's really, it-
So, when you looked at these, this is where our best, was the best investment for our money at the time?
At the time, yeah.
And you've been doing that right along with different companies and different-
I've been with Multibank Securities and, uh, they invest in, in different CDs. Basically, CDs. I have treasuries, federal treasury bills that I've invested in. That's watershed money that are locked up. They're step-up bonds for years. I mean, they're like, we can never spend them. So, these are like thirty-year investments I make. And so, yet there's no risk to us. It's just this Vermont thing, that they aren't in Vermont. And, and I've had that money invested since two thousand and two. And this policy was written in two thousand and six. And-
So, this is grandfathered?
I, I got a cotton mouth like, well, Joan. That's what it was.
One of the things, you know, uh, as Joan said, you know, whatever you say will follow. I will tell you that this policy was written-
And there may be a cost, though, you know?
Well, that's what I'm going to get to here in the, in the second. One of the things is, this policy was written in two thousand and six. And I'm sure that Rennie put it together by, you know, getting in touch with the league, you know, getting in touch with Shelburne, getting in touch with a few other places and coming up with this policy. And I, and I don't want to say that it's a, it's a bad, that it's a bad policy, but I can tell you that there's room for improvements. And I'll, and I'll give you an example. Under municipal bonds, alright, there's municipalities that go bankrupt, okay? And so, there's, there's high-quality municipal bonds. And what Joan purchased through Edward Jones are high-quality. They're A and double A and A-plus bonds. I mean, they're very high-quality bonds. You still need to-
Levels. When they start to fall, when you have a triple A, then it drops to a double A, he gets notified. He calls me. The bonds have just dropped from a double A, triple A rating to a double A. Nothing to worry about. I just want to put you on alert. We'll be watching. So, I mean, I would get at least twelve notices. And if I totally, yep, forget it, yep, forget it. Then at the end, we're going to lose. But the minute I got one call saying, Joan, you're getting in a danger zone and starting to drop.
You can sell it.
We need to move. And we'll sell them.
So, he does his job very good.
Oh, he's excellent. You know, he's been very attentive. I'm a new customer to him.
But they don't have an office here in the city?
This guy does. The weird ones where I have these two latest bonds. Um, and so, there's plenty of warning that things are going to start to fall. It's not like I'm going to wake up in the morning, they're going to call me and say they went bankrupt. Actually, I've had two investments where the banks did fold and they're federally insured. I had my money within seven days and just had to reinvest it elsewhere. So-
So, one other thing I can tell you, as I mentioned about this policy, you know, it, it does need to be improved. And, you know, I have, I have somebody who's working on that. And actually, Multibank is working on it as well. You know, just like any policy, you know, a policy that's five years old should, should be looked at, you know, and see if it's, if it is up to date. That needs to be done anyway, alright? And, and, you know, Joan and I will continue to work on that. And once we have a recommendation, we'll get it to you. In the meantime, you know, let's say if the city council says that relative to the current policy, we want, the city council wants adherence with that, uh, with the authorized institutions. If you were to say you want that done, you know, ASAP, okay? You know, I can tell you, we can, we can move these holdings. And, and some of them, we might take a hit at, okay? You know, I mean, it's possible, Joan, that for, to move them from one place to another, we could conceivably take a hit. So, if you, you know, if you want to maintain that Vermont, offices in Vermont, and they're all regi-, you know, Multibank is registered to do business in Vermont. But if you want us to do that, uh, I would, I would suggest that you give, you give a reasonable period of time to divest yourself from, from one place to another. So that we aren't bailing out and going here, um, you know, you know, in a week.
I think that we're going to be, if we do that, we're going to be limiting ourselves to the investments.
I agree. I mean, I, I really don't understand. I mean, I think that, you know, like a lot of things, I mean, it, it, it sounds good and it's warm and fuzzy. You know, it sounds great, you know, Vermont. But the reality of it is, is, you know, like most people, I mean, the city of Virgens has financial considerations. And it would occur to me that one of the things that, that we're charged with doing is, um, is maximizing return in a prudent manner. Um, I, I just find it severely limiting. I mean, I, I don't, I don't limit my own investments to companies that are registered or have offices in Vermont. I can't think of a single person that I know who does. I'm not sure why the, uh, the city should be, I, I mean, it just seems like a very, very little box to be in. I don't think it's necessary. I mean, Vermont, I, I, and, and, you know, maybe I shouldn't say this. I mean, Vermont is not necessarily a hotbed of financial activity, you know, relative to, uh, you know, what's that?
Chicago.
Well, I, I insert, you know, I, it is what it is.
So, David, so you, you're feeling, you know, relative to the policy? I mean, obviously, we, we, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that any institution that we deal with is registered to do business in Vermont. What you're saying is, is that you would support removing the offices in Vermont requirement under the policy?
It doesn't make any sense to me to have that in there.
I feel the same way.
Should, should we, uh, wait till we hear from the gentleman that's working with Mel to come up with the policy? Uh, I mean, are we going, is that, are we going to be acting now and then acting again later?
That gentleman will not have any, the, I don't want to, I don't want to say that that's totally a political decision, but I think, I think it was. I think it's, you know, that is not what he's, will work. He, what he's going to work on is relative, the types of investments, in his opinion, that we are safe to invest in with grading, grading requirements too. Because really, that thing is not quite restricted enough. No.
So, David, you making a motion?
Randy then?
Well, go ahead.
Are we going to make a motion or you want to?
Well, we got some other discussions. We can finish it.
Well, no, I was going to make a motion.
Alright, Lo.
Well, I was just wondering if, if maybe we can keep some verbiage in there that future investments, if we want to look inside the state first and see if there's anything comparable, that that may be encouraged, but not, not handcuff ourselves. That's, that's one of the things I would just like to throw out there.
Good point. Good point.
Of future, not-
So, okay, David?
I, I would make a motion to, um, with regard to the city of Virgens investment policy, to strike the language in paragraph three that begins with the word, just a second. Uh, let me just, let me rephrase it. That paragraph three should read, "The investment of all city of Virgens funds shall be made with financial institutions that are registered to do business in Vermont."
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by David, second by Ziggy. Need another minute or two, Joan, to-
Nope, I'm just making sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have one. Pete and-
Uh, he's not here. He can't vote.
His, his, Joan will write his parting words, right?
Yep. So, okay, so move.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Alright, um, I've added an item C, which, uh, one of our members, Mr. Joe, uh, thought it'd be very nice to recognize, uh, and show our appreciation for citizens that have stepped forth, uh, in this rough time of, of tropical storm Irene. And so, a resolution was, uh, put together. And I, because Joe asked for it, I've asked him to read it. And on the bottom, there are places for everybody- to read it, and on the bottom, there are places for everybody's signature, and I'd asked those that would like to, to sign it, and that'll go in as a matter of record to the city minutes. Joe?
Sure, thanks. And I, I want to say that I, you know, I know we're, we're not going to mention, I'm sure there's a lot of citizens in the city here that have donated time, very generous with their time, money, and, and resources that we can't recognize by name, but I really appreciate the time that the mayor spent and the council for, for recognizing these people. "In the wake of disaster, Russia's citizen solidarity has helped flood-hit communities. Citizens, organizations, and businesses alike came forward to send a strong message of hope in the wake of Tropical Storm Irene and the damage it brought to Vermont. Organizations and businesses in our community have established themselves as drop-off points for donations." Quoting a young Vermont couple in Rutland, "Vermonters are a united front in the battle against the devastating losses suffered by our state in the recent hurricane. They have T-shirts with the slogan, 'I am Vermont Strong.'" Addison County's Firefighters Association organized over fifty volunteer firefighters to bring themselves, tools, and equipment to assist in the Rochester, Hancock, Stockbridge, and Pittsfield area. Firefighters from Vergens that went to Rochester to help on September third, two thousand and eleven included Fire Chief Jim Brewer, First Deputy Chief Chris Giebo, and firefighters Bill Brown, Les Champagne, Tyler Pierce, and Donald Hall. The Vergens Public Works Crew made preparations for the storm and continued to work during the storm, picking up trees and branches that fell and checking on the water levels. Public Works Supervisor Jim Larro visited the city docks several times during the night to check on the docks and voters to ensure their safety. On September tenth, two thousand and eleven, Jim spent his day assisting in Moretown. Additionally, there were numerous citizens that participated in the storm damage cleanup in various communities. The Vergens City Council resolved to recognize the generosity and extra effort given by our fire department members, public works department employees, and citizens of Vergens during and after the damage to property and threat of personal safety brought by Tropical Storm Irene. Approved this thirteenth day of September twenty-fifth."
Thank you. And thank you for suggesting that. There are some sites still available, or you can get on the internet, search out, because people are still looking for help. So please visit those sites and, and citizens by all means. Continue to be generous and help out those that are in need. Who knows, maybe someday it'll be you that is asking for that help. On another note, Mel has his review to review, and he and I will meet tomorrow to go over that. Joan, I'm still waiting for a little information from you so we can get that behind us, get that taken care of. I did get a note from Kitty Oxholm, and she would like everyone to know that they're holding a reception and introducing the new director, Jane Spencer, and the assistant librarian, Diane Lawson, and that will be this Thursday night, September fifteenth, from seven to eight P.M. at the library, and they'd like to see as many people there as possible. So that is that.
What was that, excuse me?
It is this Thursday, September fifteenth.
When?
Seven to eight. So, on that note, I would ask...
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.